Thank you, everyone, so much for being here. This originally started out as an event for people to meet Candace and I, but then we thought, why not extend the event to the whole field? So that voters could really understand their options. And, you know, have a say in where we go as a town. Erica is going to be the emcee for the evening. We are going to record, so raise your hand now. If you do not want to be on film or if you're uncomfortable with that, we can make sure you're not in the shot or pivot away from that entirely. All right, that sounds like consent. We're going to go through and introduce ourselves, and then we'll dive into some questions. You're all welcome to ask questions. We have some that have been sent in. Yeah, and it's very informal. Please, we want you guys to get out of it what you came here for. So ask any question. Speaking for myself, I'm an open book. But yeah, thank you. I know it's hard to get out, and I know there's a lot of things on the ballot. So thank you all for making the time.
There are pieces of paper and some pens over there. So if you have any thoughts or questions that you want to jot down, you don't want to forget, or you're uncomfortable asking, feel free to pass them over. You can just fold them up and I'll read them. So just want to make sure everybody feels comfortable, so.
Okay.
Ginny, you want to take off?
Absolutely. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ginny Boraya Wessel. I became resident of Hampton in 1975 when I got married. I got two things my husband asked me to do is be a Republican and live in Hampton. Well, I fulfilled one of those anyway. I have two grown children, and I have a granddaughter who's just turning 13. I have a bachelor's in education from Plymouth State College. I have worked in childcare for over 34 years in Hampton. I helped establish and am co-director, I mean, director and co-teacher of Hampton Child and Family Program Village Preschool. We were the first program in the area to offer scholarship assistance to working families who didn't qualify for state or federal assistance. We did that through community fundraising, grant writing, and we continue that up to today. We also have kept our tuition rates way below what normal for-profit centers because we want all children to have the value of preschool education. And we also want all parents to be able to work and afford childcare. So that's something that we've worked very hard to do, and we've kept it up to 33 years. And I've maintained one of the same staff for the 32 years. So that's been really great. I served on the Hampton Budget Committee for three years as an elected person. I did 12 years as a selectman. And I have done 15 years on the school board. I have also served many years as a selectman and the school board representative on the budget committee. The budget committee is where it's at, and I really like it because that's the nuts and bolts of the town. It gives you a true understanding of what it costs around the town, what we need, what we don't need, and it's a very good place to start. I signed up for the three-year school board position because I spent my life in Hampton advocating for children. I have enjoyed doing school board, although there's been many difficult decisions that we've had to make, and some of them have been very unpopular. So you have to have the courage of your convictions and be willing to follow them through. And that's one of the things that's very important, you're a school board member, because you won't always be popular, but you'll always do your convictions and you'll always be true to yourself. And that's the most important thing. I love working for the betterment of all children in Hampton, no matter what their economic level is, no matter what their special needs are. All children are special, and all children deserve the same opportunities, which is what we were very hyped to do. With proposed changes in funding, rate cuts for special education, school voucher programs, the school is going to have to discuss, have discussions in an open and fair discussions. The recent tax assessments have made property values very high for some people, and our older and our younger generation are struggling. And so we have to debate what the school needs versus what the taxpayers can afford. And that's the biggest issue facing the town of Hampton right now. It's not only we have to decide what's best for kids, but we have to make decisions not based on Republican, Democrat, independent, but community, because that's what Hampton is. Above everything else, it's the kids, it's the mothers, it's the fathers, it's the grandparents, aunts, uncles, everything. It's the community of Hampton, and that is what always is first in my mind and my community, also the kids. What the... We have to decide what the school department needs to operate, what we can cut, how we can balance the cost versus ability of everyone to pay. That's the big issue. And the school board is very aware that our responsibilities are to develop policies and procedures. And if we always spend the budget which the voters have given, all of you will still be involved in school, but five of us will be gone because state law says that we can never always spend a budget. So that's another thing that weighs on us is to keep very good tabs on what the budget is, what we are doing, how we are doing it. I am asking for your support on my reelection to the school board because I promise I'll be fair, I'll be honest, and I'll go the extra mile for your child and your family. They are our future. They are Hampton's future, and we need to take care of them. I will work hard. I'm willing to talk to anyone, anytime. Most people know where I am, at least 10 hours a day. And then I'm home, so anytime, anywhere, come talk to me. And I thank you for having me here tonight.
Hi, I'm Frank Bajowski. I've lived in Hampton since 1964, '65, on and off. My dad used to run a Hampton Beach Lifeboat Station many years ago. I graduated or I went to school in Marston, Hampton Academy, Wentz County, and I was fortunate. I went to a U.S. Federal Academy, graduated from that. Ended up going in the Navy during the Vietnam era. Was in a patrol squadron up in Brunswick, Maine, flew a bit. Ended up in Japan a couple times. I have four children, three are living, nine grandchildren. Two of my children were in special ed. One of them is in Fairfax County, Virginia, and working for the county in special education. So I'm kind of familiar with that. But, you know, let me cut to the chase. I'm looking at my tax assessment. I mean, has anybody in here got, you know? If you don't have a mortgage, it's every six months you get your assessment or your bill. For those of you who do have a mortgage, you look at your statement. It's gone up tremendously. So I have to make cuts at home because I have to pay additional taxes. But when I look at the school and I look at the school budget over the past several years, it keeps climbing, keeps climbing and climbing. Enrollment's actually decreased. You know, I think go about 50, 60 children a year. So we're paying more for fewer children. We're not getting smarter children out of it. And primary education is very important. If you don't get it when you're in primary education or junior high, then you're going to have to catch up in high school. And those who go to college, you end up in a 100 course, not a 101, but a 100, which is remedial to make up for what you didn't learn before. So it's really important that we establish the foundation for our young children, and we do it in a cost-effective, in a cost-effective manner. I mean, I've looked at the budget. There's lots of opportunities to shave a few dollars here and there, but the budget still climbs. It still climbs. I have my observations, but I'm willing to work with other board members to come to a decision as to how we can save the taxpayer money and accomplish the same thing, if not more. And just so you know, I retired from the federal government. I worked for Treasury Department right next door to the White House. My job was auditing procurements. I've learned a lot about who's wasting money and who isn't. So that's my take on the whole thing. I think I can find those things. But if you look at the warrant articles, the budget items, why are the votes always 5-0? Doesn't anyone dissent from anything that's proposed? Everybody votes the same. There's something wrong with that. You know, it's either 5-0 or 0-5. Nobody questions each other. So if I'm elected, I'm going to question things. I might be the odd person out, but I'm going to be the one person representing all of you. Thank you.
My name is Les Shepherd. I've lived in Hampton pretty much all my life. I... My wife and I got teaching jobs right out of college in Australia for four years. And I was probably going to stay there, but we had twins, and my wife said, "It's time to go home." And so we made our way back, and I've been teaching in, previously in SAU 21, ever since 1980. For you folks who are good with math, I was 18 when I started teaching. But I've been in education for close to 50 years. I've been a teacher. I've been a high school coach in a couple of sports, basically boy's soccer for 28 years. I had to give that up when I became a school principal. I was involved with the Teachers Association, and I used to be involved with negotiating contracts. I think I negotiated almost every teacher contract from 1981 to about 2008. And there's a lot to that, and you learn a lot. Interesting thing, way back when, when I was in college, teachers didn't have the right to bargain collectively in New Hampshire. And there was a group of teachers in Timberland that went out on strike for the right to bargain collectively. And that's when teachers were allowed to to work for their benefits and so on and so forth. So it was really new. And back in the 80s, it was wild times because every single teacher contract, every if, and, shall, may, might, was new. And so over the different contracts, we were fleshing all of that out, and there were a lot of grievances, and a lot of them went to arbitration. And I learned a lot. It was hard work, but I learned an awful lot doing that. And I mention that because we have a teacher contract and a CESA contract that are up for either approval or not approval. And if they're not approved, we're going to be right back at the bargaining table, and I would bring that expertise back because it's not as simple as it sounds. It's a pretty complicated process. And if you do the wrong thing, as in most of the things that we do on the board, you can find yourself in legal jeopardy, just like that. It's not easy. And I bring my experience. I was the Seco's Education Association President for four years. And during those four years, part of my job was to go to every SAU 21. That's Hampton, North Hampton, Seabrook, Southampton, Hampton Falls. I had to go to every single one of those school board meetings every month for four years. And you get to know what works as a school board member. You get to know what works and how they play out and so on and so forth. It's worth four credits as a college course, that's for sure. So I bring a lot of experience to the table. Ginny is absolutely right by it. I'm not in this for politics. I'm in this for kids. I'm in this for teachers, and I'm in this for the community members. I have to disagree with Frank. We have many votes that are not 5-0, trust me. And we have heated arguments.
We do.
And when it's all said and done, we vote. Ginny votes the way she wants to vote. I vote the way that I want to vote. And when it's done, we move on. So I know I've been board chair six or seven years. I bring a lot of experience to the table. We have a very good functioning board, and I'd like to continue with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Candace O'Neill. I'm a mom to three crazy boys. They are in first, third, and sixth grade right now. I'm here because my first grader wants more recess. That's what he told me as his leaving today. Sorry, by the way, I don't know about that. So I've had kids in all the schools here in Hampton. I am an attorney by trade. I have a small firm that I opened in 2018 here in Hampton, employ a couple of local families. I'm also a former Hampton State Representative. I served the last term, and while I was up there, I was on the House Special Committee for Childcare. I also served on the State Federal Relations and Veterans Affairs Committee. I am currently the New Hampshire BIA representative on the New Hampshire Childcare Advisory Council. I am also a committee member on the Hampton Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee, former board member of the Acorn School, and former board member of the SAU 90 PTA. So I don't bring a ton of experience in terms of education. I don't work in education, and I haven't served specifically on a school board in the past. But I think what I bring is a fresh voice, and it's a parent's voice. So it's a little bit of a different perspective. What I can say, you know, about myself is that I'm action-oriented. So for example, during COVID, you know, that was a time of great despair for everyone, but I would say especially parents with young kids. And my response in those situations is to act as opposed to sort of sit in despair. And so at first, I initiated and led a fundraiser to raise funds for the Hampton School Nutrition Program. We raised $8,000 to make up the gap for funding so that the school nutrition program could continue feeding two meals to the students, even though the schools were closed. After we had met that funding gap, we then transitioned to forming a coalition between the PTA, SAU 90, and the Hampton Chamber of Commerce, along with FUN. We raised over $15,000 to fully fund the cost of childcare for every family that applied, which allowed those families that were struggling financially to have their kids more fully participate in remote learning. And I really hear what you were saying, Ginny, with, you know, when I was up in Concord, had great advice from one of my colleagues up there, which was, "Vote your conscience."
Absolutely.
And I absolutely hear what you're saying there because, you know, interestingly enough, Sarah and I had some different views during COVID, and it's kind of how we came to form this friendship and mutual respect, actually. But, you know, for me, for my kids at home, it was a struggle. They were really struggling by the end of remote learning. And so, you know, I worked collaboratively with several local families to try to come up with community-driven solutions to try to get our kids safely back into their schools. So again, I guess I would just say that I would love to see more parent representation on our board. It's something... We have a wonderful school board. And before I go any further, I just want to make really clear, and I know I speak for Sarah too when I say this, which is, this is not an indictment on our current board. We have a wonderful school board. This is more just an opportunity, because we're in such a time of tremendous change, to adapt to that change with some fresh voices. And we appreciate the time and experience that all of you bring to the table. So I just want to be abundantly clear about that. And I think at the end of the day, Hampton wins. We have five people up here competing for two seats. How long has it been since that's happened? You know, and that we've been here and had everybody here and speaking, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight because I think at the end of the day, that's what's best for our community.
Hi, I'm Sarah Elliott, like Candace. I am a parent of three Hampton boys. I have had children in Marston Center and Academy. We have had great experiences. We've been really fortunate. I've been in town now for about 20 years. I remember moving here from Portsmouth and thinking, "I'll be back in Portsmouth within a year," and you couldn't drag me away now. Ginny touched on it. We have an incredible community of people who want to see our kids be successful, of people who want to see our town thriving. And we've experienced a lot of setbacks lately. Some really difficult tax assessments have come through. The landscape in Concord is really shifting to be scary for public education. EFAs, which could really change how we fund our town schools, I think is what Frank is maybe touching on. We're coming into a time of a lot of uncertainty, and I think we need more proactive engagement. Again, this is not an indictment, but I think different... There is a tool for every situation, and I think we need a tool that will be really surgical in how we approach this, how we're prepared for this, how we meet these challenges and set ourselves up for success. From my personal experience, I am a writer. My background is in communications. I did, fun fact, spend a brief time teaching high school Spanish. Apologies to all of those children. And SZA, which is actually the more ironic of the two. If you know me, you know why that is really funny. But my background is in communications, connecting the right people to the right information. And I think an area where we fall short right now is community engagement. And the root of that symptom is the disjointed communication approach. As a parent, for me, it feels like I already have so many balls in the air, and I'm getting information either late or piecemeal, and I don't really know how to be involved, how to be engaged. It's something that you really have to pursue and find. And I think if we could make the parent experience easier, the community engagement piece would follow. We would have more voices at the table. We would have a broader coalition. Right now, I think at the school board meetings, you get one or two people who come to speak. I don't know what tune-in numbers are. But I think we can be... There's a ton of room for improvement. There's a lot of runway, a lot of opportunities. So I'm hoping that a parent voice with a fresh approach to communication could be the catalyst we need to position ourselves against what's coming.
Thank you. Before I jump into some questions that have already been sent in, since all of you have made time to be here tonight, I wanted to open the floor up to the audience if there's any questions that anybody has. Jess Crowley.
So since the EFAs, the Education Freedom Accounts, has come up, I would love to hear how you feel the EFAs will impact our school district and what you feel the school board's role is in responding to EFAs.
The EFAs will definitely affect the school board and the school budget because the EFA money, which is going to families, used to go to the school. So not only that, but your special ed is coming down with less funding. And we have... Every special needs child has something called an IEP, which is an individual education plan. And those have to be followed. They're government-regulated. It's a federal plan. So those have to be initiated and done with their funding not always coming down. The voucher system will be going out to families. So the school board will have to take a very serious look because we will be having to make some decisions that may not be happy, may not be popular, but we're going to have to look at every inch of that budget because it will be a big deficit, and we know we can't put it all on the taxpayers because we certainly have heard from them in the last six months that they can't afford anything else either. So it's going to detrimentally hurt the school budget and the school income. And that's where we're going to be because it's going to lead to very serious discussions. Everybody's going to be open and honest and be willing to listen to people. And then we've got to sit down as what I wrote because I recently wrote to Governor Ayotte, and I said, "With all this coming down, what do you have suggestions for us?" She said, "Jinny, you got to sharpen your pencil just like we are." I said, "Thank you very much." And that was her answer. So that is our answer, is we'll have to sharpen our pencils with a lot less money. So that's what's going to happen, and we don't know what's coming down yet from the White House down either. So we're going to be in a serious discussion and serious place to be. So it is going to affect... And we have to keep the school in the same operation that we have now, but we'll have to figure out where we can cut it and where we can sharpen the pencil because they will have to be sharpened.
So in my federal government experience, I worked for a number of federal agencies and went through three reduction in forces. All right, one of them was when Al Gore was vice president. Ancient history to some of you. He lopped 10% off the budget, right off the top. All right, I was in a small agency. We brought all of the people that worked, the employees, we worked with all of them. Our contractors, we worked with them as well. What was important? What wasn't important? All right, in the end, we adopted new ways of doing things. Not just that time, but the other two, and I'll get to those in a minute. But we adopted new ways of doing things, and we did them for less. And actually, we completed our work better than we did before, faster and better. All right, the other two instances in federal contracting, and I was a contracting officer for the federal government. I don't know how many billions of dollars I've obligated for the taxpayers. But we had what was called... It was government against contractors. So there was a decision, "We're going to do away with positions in the federal government." So we pitted government employees, federal employees, against contractors. And whoever came up with the best solution at the least cost to the federal government and the taxpayer would win the contract. In both instances, government employees won the contracts. They were now under contract. They had to approve. They had to comply with the contract terms and conditions. They didn't just show up for work and do whatever it was they did before. They had to comply. They actually found ways to automate. These are former federal employees. They're still federal employees, but they're being paid and treated as though they were contracted. But they grouped together. They came up with innovative means, innovative ways to accomplish their missions at lower cost, significantly lower cost. And I trust that if we work with the parents, with the teachers, with the unions... And I used to belong to two unions, by the way, maritime unions. One union that I belonged to, I remember they said, "Oh, we... They can't do without us. They can't cut our pay. They can't do this, that, or the other thing." Well, they went out of business. So I went into another union. All right, it was a different attitude. We did the same job just as well. Actually, I'd like to say we did it better. For less money to the companies, to our investors. In this case, the taxpayers are the investors. So working together, putting our minds together, and not looking at doing the same thing year after year after year. I've negotiated billions of dollars of contracts in the federal environment. So I'm familiar with unions. I'm familiar with contracts. And, you know, we'll have to make adjustments. Thank you.
You know, we go over the budget. We have a pretty sharp pencil, don't we, Ginny?
Well, I think they're going to get sharper. I, you know, unfortunately...
I'm not sure how much sharper that they can get.
And those are the difficulties.
And not have an impact on kids and not have an impact on education and the quality of education in this town, which parents over the years have said through their voting over and over again is hugely important. They want a quality education system, and that's what they have in Hampton. Are there some things that we can do better? Obviously, okay? But we have good teachers. We have good administrators. And I know the board goes through every item and carefully. It's just not a rubber stamp. However, we always have something that's kind of hanging over our heads, okay? If a family takes a right out on 95 and they decide that they're going to make Hampton their home, okay? And they have a severe special ed student, we can be on the hook for $180, $190,000 that's not budgeted for.
we can be on the hook for $180, $190,000 that's not budgeted for. And we have to pay it. And as Ginny said before, if we overspend our budget, well, there'll be five new school board members. And some of the money that's been earmarked for special ed is gonna be reduced, if I'm reading my crystal ball correctly. And then the, the question was, you know, what do we think about taking money out of public education for the vouchers and so on and so forth? Anything that, that takes money out of, out of public education, I'm not in favor of that. Come on, we, we, we do the best we can. And, you know, one of the things that you can do, you can always cut teachers and increase class size. But if you do that, you're gonna really impact the quality of education. And I know people don't wanna do that. So those are some of the issues that we have to deal with.
So I don't wanna, you know, repeat too much of what you all said, because I, I agree with a lot of it. And what I will just say quickly is currently with regard to EFAs, you know, it's, it's easier to qualify for an EFA than it is to qualify for free or reduced lunch. 350% of the median poverty level is basically qualifies you for an EFA. That money directly comes out of our public school budget. So it's a problem, and I think what we really need to be aware of too is there are six plus at a minimum bills up in Concord right now to expand that program. So it is very possible, I'm not a gambler, but I'd be willing to bet that it will pass this year, to be honest with you. They may remove that income cap altogether, and that's gonna change everything in terms of how we fund our education. And so one of the things, I, do I have the solution for that? Definitely not, I wish I did. But what I can say is I think our board should be proactive as opposed to reactive in terms of working with our state representatives up in Concord, understanding what bills are on the table, what's the likelihood they're gonna pass, and how that would impact our school district, as well as our local state senator. And I'll also just add, it's not just the EFAs. There are also bills out there that wanna do things like put caps on property taxes in the, in the local school districts, which really would handcuff us as well. There are both, there are bills that relate to things like book banning. There are bills that relate to many aspects of educational funding that can have an impact. So I think being proactive rather than reactive is, is going to be the only way to respond in this changing climate.
Yeah, to, to piggyback on what Candace said, you know, I don't, I don't think our first move should be sharpening our pencils and looking at what concessions we're willing to make with regard to our kids' education. Our schools are the heart of Hampton, our kids are the reason why we're all here. Anyone who thinks that someone would do this for political reasons, you know, especially coming into this fight, the fight of public ed's lifespan, is wackadoodle. I mean, I think we are all here because we are called to action by the pressing need that this is at our doorstep, this isn't a hypothetical, this isn't something that we even have the luxury of being for or against, it's here. And we need an action plan on day one, tracking if this bill passes, 7551 passed today, which requires that schools budget for, like, factor in for school choice into their budgeting, which is new. These are happening in real time. And we need to have a comprehensive understanding and communication plan so that our town isn't reacting to, oh, what do you mean, my kid's class size is 30? Rather, we all need to come together, here's, here are the bills, here are how they could affect us, here's what we need to do to insulate our kids from the, the effects of that. And, you know, whether or not a, a family has special needs, they should feel welcome to live in Hampton, regardless of the price tag that comes with that child. It should be our honor to give our best shot at educating them, and we should feel great about sending them somewhere else if we can. That's who we are as a community.
The only thing is if they go somewhere else, Hampton is on, has to pay for it as long as they're residents of Hampton, and that's okay. But the special ed will get paid. It's the regular ed kids that I'm worried about and the gifted and talented, because there's no, nothing protecting them. Special ed has your IEP protection.
For now.
Well, and there's also a bill that if you're over 65, you don't have to pay property taxes. And if we get hit with both of those, it'll be an interesting financial time.
But I think it's also interesting, you know, EFAs are for kids who choose to go elsewhere. So if Hampton schools are being exceptional, and people are having a great experience here, and we're retaining that, that in and of itself will insulate us from some of the financial downfall there. Because at the end of the day, that money is going to people who elect to educate their children elsewhere. And it would be interesting to see of those people who are currently choosing that option, what about the Hampton School experience didn't work for them?
Yeah, I think I would just add quickly, if that's okay. I think the, the conversation goes beyond just the school board to local, our representatives in Concord. I think we could do a better job as a community of engaging our educators as well as our community in some of these conversations. It's, it feels like there's a disconnect. And again, this isn't an indictment on our current board, but just a, I think, a reflection of a changing educational landscape is that we need all the voices at the table right now, not just the five people who are, who are sitting on the board.
Before I open it up to other questions, I'm just gonna tell the candidates here, thank you so much for your answers. I am cognizant of time here, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put a two-minute timer on each response. You'll get a one finger up from me when you have one minute left, and then a hand up when it's time to stop. Just 'cause I wanna make sure that we get through the conversations. If there's conversations that happen after the fact, like that just happened now, that's great. We wanna encourage that, but I wanna make sure that we're rolling through the topics. Any other, any other questions from the audience?
I have a question. This is more from a teacher perspective. I think you're the only one I don't know up there. I'm Sam, I've heard of a second grade teacher here in Hampton at Center School. I'm curious, especially you talk with all the cuts that you're looking to maybe make when you review the budget, and also for everyone, just the connection that we kinda talk about with the teachers. How do you plan to do that or continue to do that? And also, when we look at SAU 90's teacher pay, there's a significant difference, especially for the early step teachers with surrounding towns. So if I were to go to any neighborhood town, my pay is going to be prettier. So I'm asking you, how, like, how can you advocate for us as educators within the community, within the state, whoever you have to go up against and like really feel like we have someone fighting for us?
I'm gonna jump in on that one. I advocated for you.
Oh, I'm not saying you did not.
I advocated for you as a negotiations table, okay?
Yes.
And you are absolutely right. There were, there were people 500 yards from Center School at Winnicott that are making a lot more money than you did. There are people, there are people at the Cooperative Middle School just down Exeter Road that are making a lot more money. We are having trouble, great difficulty. Ask Lois Costa, attracting and retaining. We get people for a couple of years, and they want out because they can make serious money. Not just more money, seriously more money. So I'm gonna use this time, did you just give me the?
Not yet.
I wasn't sure which way that was, was facing. That's why I believe.
But now I did.
It's, it's important that people vote to approve this contract. And, and for the paraprofessionals, because they're in the same.
I'm speaking for them too, I just didn't want to.
You can speak for me anytime.
Yeah, I, I, not to jump in, but I think 75% of our paraprofessionals live in Hampton, and we have a 40% turnover rate in that profession. I think starting pay is $21-ish dollars and change, and that's unacceptable. Right now, paraprofessionals don't have the ability to add additional beneficiaries under their benefits plans. We could do a lot as far as being more competitive with other districts, and we definitely don't wanna be a feeder program for those districts. I think a lot of teachers here, you know, cut their teeth, get their feet underneath them, understand the landscape, and then they're out the door just as they're really hitting their stride, which is, you know, not in the best interest of our kids. And also, our teachers, as someone who has kids in, in the school, they blow me away every day.
We've, I mean, I think all of us who work in the schools or have kids who are in the schools tremendously value the educators we have. And the last thing we wanna see is an amazing teacher like Sam go to, go to another district because of the pay. But I think we also probably all know people who have done that or who maybe couldn't even get an interview here because they were too high on the pay scale. And I think, given how much we value education in Hampton, I have to wonder how much of this is maybe a communication issue with the rest of the town? Because we, honestly, there's no reason why Hampton shouldn't be at the very top of the pay scale for our educators. And if we continue to slide lower and lower, it's gonna be to the detriment of our schools. So I think we have to do a better job of communicating with the town what's actually going on. Because I really do wonder how many people in Hampton actually realize how much below that average pay scale we are. We're in it, so we know, but, you know, the average person may not.
So let me answer the question. There are ample opportunities to save money, not necessarily with a teacher's contract. There are other avenues. And the teachers and the employees probably are the ones who know best. And we as board members, we need to communicate, to exchange ideas, to work together, to find out where that low-hanging fruit is. And I don't think it's gonna be a big-ticket item that we're gonna go after. It's gonna be a bunch of little things. There are some niceties here, some niceties there, that, and you're your own best advocate. If you know of other things that can be sacrificed without, without giving a, a lesser education to children or lower pay for teachers, then that, that's certainly gonna help your argument. But we are, we are in a cost, you know, the country's in a great deficit. And, you know, it's gonna flow down. It's already started, we have three-plus years left of it. Whatever they don't get, they're gonna get next year. So, I mean, we need to put our minds together to figure out what can we live without? Do we wanna keep our teachers? Let's start looking in other areas. Thank you.
You gave a, you gave a very good answer to that question, because we do have to start looking at other areas. I had the best experience this year because I negotiated for the SESPA contract. And they were a very good group, we worked and we compromised. Unfortunately, our staff gave up their raises when we went to get the academy. And they did it for a few years, and that's how Hampton got behind, is they put the Hampton Academy project first and said, we'll wait for our raises later. Well, unfortunately, times kept, came up, and they went too fast, and we didn't get to catch up. We tried to catch up somewhat this year. But unfortunately, the people who are sitting here will vote for teacher raises. The people that are making $1,600 a month on social security can't, may not be able to vote for teacher raises. We've heard that a lot this year with the taxes and the evaluations and the people in the mobile homes that went from $100,000 to $300,000. So those, we have to balance everyone, and it all depends on how, who we can get out to vote next Tuesday. Because that's the most important thing. Because we need to give the teachers their raises, we need to give the parents their raises, and we also need to pass a budget. But we're waiting to see. But if you please remember that if for some reason one of the three failed, it's not because people don't think teachers are worth it. It's not because they don't think people, schools aren't worth it, they can't afford it. And that's what we're running into right now in Hampton. There's a lot of people who are struggling to stay in Hampton.
Any other questions from the audience? Okay, then I'm gonna read some questions that got sent in to me. Obviously, there are two incumbents that are on the ballot who have had longstanding terms on the school board. And we have three here who are new, or trying to be on the school.
New candidates.
So the question is for all candidates. Do you believe we should have term limits on the school board? If you don't, what benefits do, does our community get from having the same board over and over? If you do believe in term limits, what benefits does a community get from changing over time?
I will start. I think a diverse board is a good board. Right now, we don't have a diverse board. We have a married couple on a board of five people, which I think is inherently not diverse. Again, not an indictment, just the current landscape. I think, you know, the fact that we have teacher pay lagging behind, there needs to be an accountability from the board on that. Some people have been in these seats for a long time. Maybe let's give another person a go at it, some fresh eyes, a new approach. I think it's a great way to identify room for improvement. Myself, I, I think I have a really good relationship with most teachers as a PTA volunteer for several years, running a lot of events, and just being really involved in the schools. I try to, to know everyone and know what's going on, administration as well. I think if, if you have a new perspective and someone who's really passionate, you know, a sane person maybe doesn't enter a race with two incumbents, unless they care really deeply, unless they really wanna see things improve, and unless they're willing to do, you know, this is not a great time to be entering into the business of school boarding. It's, it's like the public, education landscape is changing in real time around us, and it's not gonna be a skipping fest through a meadow. It's gonna be hard work, you know, clinging to what we've built and, and trying to claw our way towards something better. But when you have a diverse board, you get a diverse set of viewpoints and people coming to the table with new ideas and new approaches and ways to bring new people in the community in. And Jessica Sbersky is a master at this, and sorry to call you out from the audience, but when she was on the PTA and she ran events, she had a coalition for every single thing she did. And they were phenomenal because of how much engagement she was able to achieve. And honestly, that's, that's a, seeing her example, and that is a huge inspiration for what we could do as a board if we had someone who's really passionately reaching out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal your spotlight on Jess Sbersky. Did you know this was about you? So when I first, you know, knew her to Hampton and had, had a child entering the school, I thought, how do I get involved, I'm gonna join the PTA. And that's actually how I met Jess. But Jess, you are such a beautiful example of this, this question, because I remember seeing this amazing Halloween event that you put down. And maybe a year or two later, you saying to me, I'm stepping down next year. And I said, why? You know, you did this incredible job, I don't understand. And you said, because it's time for new ideas. It's time for someone new to come in and take it in a different direction and see what they can do. And out of that was born Halloween Town. And it's, again, it's not an indictment on one being better than the other. They were both phenomenal, but I think you benefit from getting fresh voices, new turnover of ideas. You know, when I was up in Concord, I voted for term limits. So staying true to that, I think, I think there is benefit to having a diverse and, and fresh board. And my hope would be, just like with the PTA, where Jess made it a point as she was leaving to leave detailed instructions on, here's how I did it, I'm here to support you if you need my help. You know, I would hope that there were some turnover in the board, and I would expect it, that, that, you know, we'd see that same sort of cooperation. And, and I know if it were me on the board and I were stepping down, I would seek to do the same for whoever was coming to fill, to fill my shoes as well.
I think you already have term limits. People go to the polls, and if they don't like who's doing the job right now. Somebody said this to me earlier, there's no expectation that I would remain on the school board. I don't have that expectation, but I wanna remain on the school board. And the reason that I'm not sure I would want term limits is because you lose a great deal of experience that people gain over the years. And we have a pretty experienced board right now, and it makes a difference. So that's my thought. I have to agree with you. It's good to have experienced people, but it's good to bring new people on board. You don't want all new people, because all the mistakes of the past are forgotten. You can write notes down, but until you're, you're waist-deep into it, you really don't know what you're getting into and what pitfalls you can avoid. A lot of time and energy can be saved by having an experienced person in any group combined with, with some free thinkers, you know? You just have to work together. You don't want all experienced people, because there's gonna be a given mindset. But you're gonna, you don't want all new people either. And even when you stagger things, it, it becomes troublesome. It becomes troublesome. So the, the voters, the voters have a voice. And if they don't like what they're seeing or, or experiencing, then bring somebody new. But I, I'm really, I'm really adverse to a wholesale turnover of any, any board or any group. Thank you.
I remember Carol Hollingsworth, who spent many years on the Hampton School Board. I remember John Woodburn from the Woodburn Fields. Those two people had more knowledge of what was going on in Hampton and what they needed and what Hampton did, and they fought very hard to get our schools where they are today. I don't believe in term limits, geez, that's surprising to everyone here. But I believe that we need truly dedicated people. Geez, that's surprising to everyone here, but, um, I believe that we need truly dedicated people, people who are willing to listen. You may think that our board isn't diverse right now, but I can tell you they are. I can tell you the discussions that we've had. Sometimes I felt like the lone wolf, sometimes I haven't. Everybody's been willing, but you have to have board members that are willing to speak up. You have to have board numbers that are willing to disagree. You have to have your courage of your convictions and get it, you have to say what you feel and don't give up. It's not going to be popular with all the teachers sometimes. It's not going to be pos, you know, very positive with the administrators, but you all have to sit and talk. And once you talk, you bring up collaboration and you make changes. So I think it's very important that you have school board members that are willing to go beyond their comfort zones, to speak up, to not be afraid of being wrong because sometimes you're wrong and sometimes you're right, but that's okay. That's how we learn. And you meet people, and people who you never thought were going to be your friends end up to be, you get, argue and fight at the table. And then you get up and you're friends, because that's what it's about, you're working together for the Hampton kids. And that's the most important thing. And all of the present members have their, their vision of the Hampton kids in first thing in their memory every meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so, I know we've talked a lot about EFAs and teacher contracts, but this question is more geared along the lines of what are your areas of concern regarding student achievement in this school district? And how would you address that as a board?
Well, we're, we're still recovering from the effects of COVID, okay? Kids' test scores took a big hit and they're starting to improve. Uh, not, not just in Hampton, all over the state, all over the country, and, and they're starting to improve. We're, we're working on it. That's about all I can say, it's, you know.
I can jump in. Um, I think right now we're seeing the data from the scorecard of SAU ninety schools, um, Academy, Marston and Center is that the fourth graders last year are the ones who took the biggest hit as far as, uh, growth, both in math and ELA, based on their I-ready testing. Um, so I, I think, you know, a really close eye to data, what's trending, what's going in what direction? If we can extrapolate from that data that those kids are disadvantaged because of where they were academically during COVID in first grade. Um, we apply interventionist resources to that group of kids and make sure that they're commensurate with their peers in other schools. Um, I think, you know, it, it's tough being immersed in data sometimes, but we can really use it to our advantage when it's at our disposal. Um, there are a lot of different programs we can look at for if, if we're making our kids do this testing um, and participate in these benchmarking exercises. How can we not only apply that data for reporting external progress, but for improving our scores? Um, and I think that's an area where there's nothing but runway.
I agree, and you know, having three kids, um, that were lower elementary or one not even in school during COVID, I think we can all speak to what we saw they lost, um, during that time period, which was tremendous. And I think probably most of you who are educators here could speak to even like the social emotional. Um, I don't want to say immaturity, but just sort of the benchmark of where they're at as compared to their peers that maybe came before them at those grades. And finding a way to respond and, and frankly, if the budget's not there to provide them with extra supports, what other avenues can we look to? Like, there are, there are free and no cost programs in the community we could explore. The Gulf of Maine Institute, for example, I had sent an email to the school board and Dr. Costa because they will come into a school for free and train science teachers on how to provide hands-on science experiments in the community, um, to our students. That's just one example. Or the Start Your Engines program in Dover, where how about, right, how about before, before we start a testing experience, we take twenty minutes and get the kids up out of their seat and moving around and drinking water and talking about the importance of a healthy diet? This isn't the solution to the fact that they're behind, but what are the little things that we can do to try to help those kids? Because the reality is they did live through COVID and there was a gap there, and we have to meet that, that need somehow.
Do you want to go?
Yeah, okay. So, you know, pre, pre-COVID, test scores weren't all that great. They're in the sixties percentile. Um, post-COVID, they're in the fifties. Um, so that leaves a lot of room for improvement, a lot of room. As one of my former bosses told me after I bragged about getting a ninety-eight on an audit report, she said there was room for improvement. So there's room for improvement, and people who are dedicated and look at different ways to go about it are able to improve things. Those who continue to do the same thing over and over again are going to achieve the same results.
Just, just to interrupt, I, I don't want to fact check you, but I, our scores have shown incremental improvement year over year across all demographics and all grades. Um, and I, I don't know that fifties or sixties are.
I just checked it this morning.
Yeah.
I just checked it this morning for the state.
Yeah, the DOE website, me too.
So.
But they, they are trending right upward.
Not now.
Oh, they're. Twenty twenty-four is the most recent data.
I just looked.
I can pull it up right now. Does anybody have? I mean, everyone at home, do your own research, but if you go to the SAU landing page, you can find the, the scorecard which reflects all the I-ready testing. Um, and they're assessing both in math and ELA. And you will see for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is the last data set that's available. Those numbers are climbing year over year. But, as they say, do your own research.
Are you, yeah, you're awesome.
I'm done, go ahead.
Okay, are you aware that Hampton has a growing homeless population and children? Have you got, we have some children that are couch surfing. We have more and more children with, um, social emotional issues, mental health issues. We have, uh, separated parents. Our food insecurity is growing by leaps and bounds. When do you remember when you brought in snacks for teachers so that they wouldn't have to take it out of their own pockets? If you know a teacher that's in the school, please ask them, do you need snacks? Can you use, um, drinks? Can you use whatever? If everybody brought in a bag to a teacher, they'd have a, a closet full of food for these kids because these kids are going home and some of them don't eat on the weekend. Because their parents are not going to sign up for twenty-three hours of hunger. They're not going to put their name on a free and reduced hot lunch because they think somebody's going to see their name and feel bad for them or think that they're not able to adequately supply for their children. If children are worried about where they're sleeping, what they're eating, who's going to be there at home, they can't take, take tests. They can't do well in school. So we have to provide as a community some of the supports to help those parents and those children. Because it's not the parents' fault if they're struggling. For some, yes, but for some, it's environment and social issues that have happened to them. And so we need to help them. So the next time you bring your child to school, ask your teacher, say, hey, could you use some snacks? Hey, what could you use? Could somebody need a coat? Somebody need a hat? Help, help the kids because I think testing scores, life will start to get better. But right now, most parents are worried about how are we going to pay the rent, the mortgage, the, the car, the insurance? What happens when our taxes go up? Everybody's worried. And when parents are worried, kids are worried. Our testing, our testing will settle down, but we have to help and help them thrive. And that's what we need to do to help get the testing scores up and parents and kids to thrive.
Jenny, I think you're absolutely right, and I'm.
I'm a hundred percent right because I bring a bag of food in every month.
No, I mean, I, I would love to know, um, honestly, why aren't we doing that now? I mean, just, and I.
Because people don't want to admit in Hampton that they can't afford things. People don't want to admit that their children might not have a coat. But if a teacher notices day after day that they're not coming in with a coat, some is a problem.
I absolutely hear you. I, and I, I think that's really important that you show, you just shone a light on that. And I know some of the parents in this room, and I think knowing the community and seeing what happened during COVID, people will rise to that challenge if we can get that, you know, out into the community.
We have five thousand dollars in unpaid lunches and breakfasts. We have, you know, so that, you can help by donating to that. You can just ask your teachers, ninety percent of your teachers will tell you, they won't tell you who's struggling, but they'll tell you they've got some.
Right.
So any school you go to, please help.
But I guess to the point is, there is a disconnect between where that information comes from as a parent. I also have a child, what I call it, who's a ninth grader, and I have a fifth grader. And, you know, I, I do pay attention and I'm obviously here, right?
Yeah.
And I think all of your points are great, and I know certain teachers that self-advocate for what they need. And I'm the first person to sign up every time somebody needs something and even when I, when I, when people don't ask. But there is, that information is not being, what you know as a school board potentially, this ins and outs of everything, what's needed, is not potentially being, um, shared with community members. And so there's, it's not, not to offend you.
No, I'm not offended. I learned, and I, I find, I'm sorry, I, I met a village preschooler, my Hampton child, I'm feeling forgotten in the school, but I listen.
I love it.
I listen.
I am all for helping people that need help.
Yeah, and I think that's right.
And I think we find that a lot of people are like, I'm on, I'm on the board of the Hampton PTA and we live, this is, we are always trying to find ways to help where we can. So like, if we could, you know, get together, like, advocate to people of Hampton.
How about if somebody says, let's have a meeting and how, how can we help?
That needs to be generated. I think what these gals are trying to say.
It's from the school board.
Like, if you're identifying a place where there's need and within our community that you see community members, you know this community is awesome. You live here and you represent us well. But you, if you see a place where there's need, that would be a great place for you to reach out and ask the community to help.
And honestly, Candace and I are, are not planning to win this. We know what we're up against, but we are available on the losing end of this. We can be a parent outreach, we can help you with communication. Like, the end goal here is how do we make this a better situation for students? We are not in it for the accolades. We understand thoroughly there aren't any. But we want to improve things. And if, you know, on Wednesday of next week, we're fully expecting to be at the bottom of the ticket, we are ready in that moment to help in whatever way you need.
I think it speaks to better communication, to Sarah's point.
Yeah.
Uh, between the board, the PTA and our local representatives in Concord. I think we could create a really strong coalition there of people to advocate for, for the kids. Because everything you say is right. I think we all agree.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, that, mine didn't come from being on the school board. I came from life in Hampton.
Yeah.
And I talked to the teachers and I talked to everybody. And that's why I found out these things, but maybe I should broadcast them more. I try every week, every month to tell people about free and reduced hot lunch and all this other stuff. So maybe I need to av, advocate more for some of the other things I hear.
Well, I would make, honestly, maybe at the school level as well. You know, maybe our leadership in school needs to be doing a better job of advocating this more. You know, it's not all on the school board.
Yeah, I think we can all do a better job of that.
I think so.
We can all ask more and, and we can all try to share information more.
Yep.
Well, there must be a disconnect because we have spent, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny. Hours brainstorming, talking about this, talking about this with Mary Borg, our food director, uh, asking Mary what she thinks we can do, uh, over and over and over, and, and that's at school board meetings. So people aren't watching the school board meetings or, um, missing that part of it. But we've certainly spent a lot of time on this issue.
We have spent, but I think we do have to do.
Outside of the school board meetings, how does the board communicate to their, to the community?
And nobody's ever asked.
If I'm, if I'm not watching it.
Yeah, right. Well, it's, it's, of course, it's, it's on over and over and over again, so, I mean, you know.
Like, you guys, you are parents who are exhausted.
Oh, I do, I do.
The kids at the work and the.
Nobody, I would say, just sort of, nobody is denying that you are all dedicated and doing the best that you, you all can. It's a transparency between what you're doing at a table and the community as a whole.
Well, there's, there's two things that, that, two complaints that we get from time to time from parents. Too much information is going home with the kids, okay? And I never open my son, daughter's bag and then I find this and so on and so forth. Or, um, gee, I didn't, I didn't see it, I couldn't find it on the website. Those, those two things happen, so.
Truthfully, that is a problem. Truth happens for sure. Yes, and I think especially having a new one at the academy, I don't want to speak for yourself because I know a lot of this is honestly Sarah's thought and idea, but, um, the disjointed communication.
Every teacher has a different method, a different cadence, a different delivery date. Some, it's a Canva email that if you're dragging and dropping into your own calendar, you can't because you can't pull text out. Um, as, as people who work, you know, I, I am in like nine different systems in my day to day. As a writer, I have to keep track of everything really precisely and make sure that any information I'm putting out is packaged in a way that not only is going to get where it's going, but it's going to be engaged with and remembered. Uh, I think that would be like a catapult for our community into engagement. If you could go to a dashboard and say, here are my three kids, here are their classes. If I were to click up to an administrator email, I have two kids in these two schools, I can see what Dr. Campbell is saying. I can see what, it's not Tim Landon anymore, but I can.
My role will tell.
Thank you, I always mispronounce the name. I can see what they're saying and I can do it, and then if I want to climb up the tree a little farther, I can see the message from Lois Costa, I can see an update from you guys. And it's all in one place, and I can get there from the website. And it may be just pure fantasy, but maybe my kids' report cards are there too.
Well, the, the other thing is that, you know, we all, we all use different social media now. Um, you know, those who are on the older, on the older end, myself, we use certain social media. The younger people use other social media.
We could get you guys a TikTok.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's the stuff, you know, you can have a link from various social media back to the Hampton website. That would make a big difference. Um, to those who use certain social media.
The trouble we have right now, Frank, is just basically each school has its own form of communication that even within the teams.
Let me talk to you about tomorrow.
But see, this is like.
Yeah, this is like great, it's great.
You guys have gotten some good ideas from this, and I think, you know, I, I again, don't want you to think we're running out of an indictment, but it's even seeing the incremental progress we do tonight, that's exciting, that's cool.
It's very exciting. I'm like, okay, what else can we do? So, you guys will be hearing from us.
And it costs nothing.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right.
I think it would be nice if there was a way too to specifically engage the teachers as well. You know, it's maybe like a quarterly meeting with the board and the teachers, is that usable?
God bless the teachers, but some of them are doing and buying food and stuff, but they don't want anyone to know about it because they're doing it.
Oh, no, I just, I just mean like having an opportunity for them to meet with you guys.
Could we do this with here once a quarter?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, do you think you're going to do that, Sam?
In the district, we're not, we're not allowed to ask for anything district wise. And I don't mean to, but that, there's a little bit of disconnect. And Jenny, I see your post and I'm always so grateful about like, if you know a teacher, send this. But we are not allowed to ask for things without getting it approved by the district.
Okay. And who's the district? Is it the school board or is it the administration?
It is not you.
Okay.
We have to, we have to submit it to our admin and then they would go to the superintendent and I don't know who goes there or how it's.
Okay, I'll find out, I'll tell.
But that would be a great link on the website, open needs.
No, I'm not mentioning that.
And find out.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. But also, rather than doing a quarterly meeting, because thinking of how much the teachers already do, why don't you guys go to one of their already meetings that they have scheduled, ask to be on one of their meetings and say, hey.
Get up here.
But I think you guys have a ton of great ideas. But like, that's another way of like, rather than putting something on the teachers, you guys take that step. And I know you guys try to put somebody on each of the different boards, I know Wendy's on the PTA.
Yeah.
She, um, comes to some of our meetings or was coming to some of the meetings, I think she still does, because I don't always go anymore because I'm not on the PTA anymore, but like.
You did return.
I did. Um, but like that type of thing, like putting you guys in those things, and I know you guys have limited times too, because again, you're all busy as well. But like, that's where going to those type of things would probably be more beneficial of getting that communication out. I'm sorry, I'm not going to watch a meeting on the TVs, but if there is brief bullets of where we can get it and how we can get it, because I know the PTA starts with two, getting their information out and how it's being warped and seized. Like, there's a lot of conversation on that too, like, it's just how do we get to people? Because people are now instant and they want it instant. And if you're not getting to the instantly, they're not going to look at it.
Just speaks to how much things are changing. The way they process and receive information is totally different than it was ten years ago. Just like the things our kids are experiencing. I mean, I had to deal with a situation with my son in school this year where he didn't understand that when you Google something, AI pops up. And he didn't know what AI was. And we had to have a whole conversation about, you know, making sure you're fact checking and how to cite that source. I mean, it's just so different from when all of us went to school. And we just have to adapt.
Your parents are changing. Like, they're getting younger and younger. Like, it's now the millennials are coming in and then it's going to be that next generation coming in. That's all different, so.
It's scary when you stand up and.
We're all still very young, yes. We are super young and we're all very cool still.
And on TikTok.
We're all on TikTok.
I'm just saying, the dynamics of everything. I'm just saying, the dynamics of everything, I see it in my corporate work life, like the dynamics of who you're working with and how you're working with is changing. And you have to figure out yourself how to adapt to those changes and not expect them to adapt to you.
I think we've naturally covered a lot of.